I would like to call to order the meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Would you all join me as we get an invitation by Deanne Davis and then I'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
Lord, we ask for your presence with us tonight as we continue to navigate through these times. Be with our leaders, give them the knowledge and wisdom they need to guide us. Be with the essential workers who are providing the goods and services we so desperately need. Unite us in this battle so we can overcome the obstacles before us and emerge triumphant and stronger. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a roll call, please.
Everyone have their mics unmuted? Becker?
Here.
Souter?
Here.
McBane?
Here.
Liston?
Here.
D'Attilio?
Here.
Noel? You're muted, Rick.
Here.
Lakeman?
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
You all received the meeting minutes from November third. Any comments or questions on them? Hearing none, they will stand as submitted. The first thing that I would like to do this evening is read a well-deserved proclamation. Says, whereas Timothy Gladys has served as the Columbiana Police Chief from July seventeenth, two thousand and nine through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, and whereas he has been a conscientious and trustworthy employee, his dedicated interest and devotion to duty have had a valuable effect of efficiency with every department he has worked in during his employment with the city. We wish to extend to him our sincere appreciation for his outstanding performance of duty. Whereas he has been notably involved in progressive decisions for the police department as well as the city of Columbiana and its citizenry. And whereas he has exhibited true dedication and distinction to the planning and growth of a constantly evolving and expanding community. And whereas he has earned the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact. And whereas he has willingly and notably demonstrated dedication of purpose for the progress of not only the police department, but also the entire city for economic and aesthetic development of the business environment and residents equally. And whereas he will be missed both professionally and as well as a friend. We extend our very best wishes to him for continued success and happiness in his future. Now therefore, we the council for the city of Columbiana do hereby proclaim our appreciation to Timothy Gladys and do further express our friendship and good wishes to Tim for his years of dedicated service to the city and its citizens. Thank you, Chief. I have had the distinct honor of serving with you for many years. And I know I've told you privately how I feel, but publicly just want to one more time say thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate it. It's been a pleasure working with you as mayor and been a good friend.
I echo that, Chief. You've always come forward. You've always done everything you could to push the city to get to where we needed to be. And some of the times were a little difficult because we wanted to do stuff that most people probably wouldn't have said we could. But you helped make it happen. We appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Skip. I appreciate it. And you know, those that think you can't do the impossible need to get out of the way of those of us who are doing it.
I'm gonna write that down.
Chief, you stand tall and enjoy those grandkids.
Sir, I appreciate that very much. And you've been a friend and I appreciate everything you've done, Dan. And may God give you strength and comfort as well. Love you.
Thank you.
Chief, again, thank you. Wish I'd had more time to work with you, but I've enjoyed the time we've had to work together, so.
Appreciate it, Dan. And it's been a pleasure on my end, too. Thank you, sir.
And Chief, I'm glad that's one of the last things you're gonna do is bring thousands of people through Columbiana for the spectacular. You're in charge of directing the traffic, so we know you'll do a great job. Good luck to you.
We got a plan. We got a plan and we're gonna see how that works out. And yeah, I'm ready and I think we're gonna be able to pull it off. So we're gonna see how she goes. I'm sure it's gonna be a challenge, but it'll be a good time. Let's see what happens.
Chief, I'd like to add my thanks to everyone else's and it's been good working with you.
Thanks, Dick. I appreciate it. Same here. I'll miss seeing the dogs walking you around town.
Chief, I just did everything. It's been sad. It's been great being with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Ted. You're a good man. I appreciate all your help.
And Chief, I know I said it before, but you're gonna be missed. Our administration, our team was, you know, you guided us through a lot of things, whether it was, you know, supervisors from other departments or clear down to the lifeguards this year that you were teaching to deal with COVID. So, you know, we really appreciated everything that you've done for so many years.
I appreciate it. It's been a pleasure and you've been great to work with. You set the tone, you show us the goals and you turn us loose and let us go do good things. And that's the mark of a great leader. I appreciate it very much and your friendship and support and help as well.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief, I'd just like to add that I haven't worked with you for too many years, but it certainly has been memorable. And we've had to deal with some issues that I can honestly say I never thought I'd be dealing with probably. But as it turns out, they've been very interesting. I've appreciated all of your support, all of the knowledge that you've imparted to me, and I'm certainly gonna miss working with you. Good luck.
Wish you all the best and I'm sure you do a great job. You're a good go-to guy to have. I'm glad to have you in my corner and it was always a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Yes, and Chief, thank you again for everything. All your support for the chamber, your support for safety council, support for community foundation. We knew we could always rely on you. We needed anything for any of those organizations, so thank you.
I appreciate it. And without all you folks, none of this works. It's just, I was pleased to play a small part in it. But without all the help we had from all those organizations and all the people in them, none of this works at all.
Well, anyway, I think everybody's had time to make a couple of comments. Is there any that I've missed? I don't think so. Do you have anything else you want to add, Chief?
No, sir. Just been a pleasure. It's been a heck of a ride. I've had a good time. And we talked earlier about some of the crazy things that have happened to me over my career. And it's just been a great ride. I have no complaint at all. I've had a wonderful time. City of Columbiana has been good to me and people here support the police department more than any place I've ever been in my entire career, in the whole forty years. People here are really something special and it's been a pleasure to serve them. And as long as we keep that servant thought in our mind and go that way, it's gonna be just fine. The police department was here long before I got here. It'll be here long after I leave. And I'm proud to play this a small part and a little blip in the history of it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Well, with that, thank you for your service, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
We will move on. You received Park Recreation and Cemetery Board Meeting Minutes from the twenty-sixth. Any comments or questions on those? If not, Deanne would like to address counsel regarding the Columbiana Community Foundation. They'd like to present a check for Mulberry Alley.
Yes, it is my great pleasure to present this check to the city of Columbiana for twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars for the Mulberry Alley project. Community Foundation unanimous agreed that that was a wonderful project that we wanted to support. It's getting a lot of attention for Columbiana and definitely worthy. And we're very glad to be able to provide that support. Lance provided us with a great grant application. And we definitely look forward to seeing the improvements in Mulberry Alley and that the community foundation can help to fund that.
That's incredible. It's gonna be huge.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. We really appreciate it to, you know, to get the public involved. To get the community foundation to support that project is great for us. And the progress committee, I know that Rick and Skip have been working on that and it's been a fun process. And, you know, Rick might even want to say a thought or two about getting the community involved here. We were just talking about it a little bit earlier. But, you know, we're trying to hit it from all different directions, so everybody buys into it. And we're early on in the process. People have got kind of a taste for what it's gonna be. But that money is gonna be a great start. Thank you.
I would just like to say that the progress committee teamed up with the entrepreneurship class at Columbiana High School. And we challenged them to come up with some ideas for developing the alley. And we were out there about two weeks ago to the school. They made a PowerPoint presentation. And I'll tell you what, they have some fantastic ideas and we're loving them. And this money's gonna be great to give us some of the resources to do what these kids are dreaming of. And it's, I will tell you, it is gonna be exciting and we look forward to seeing how that's gonna lay out over the next few months.
I just like, I think that the money's gonna be serving two purposes because not only is it developing the alley, but it's developing all of those kids. Giving them the ability, not only to have some ideas, but to genuinely start to finish, own a project as a high school student in their own community, be able to walk by it and be able to tell their friends I had a part in that. And it will change, it'll change the course of direction for many of those kids with what they want to do with their lives. So I mean, it's a sizable investment, but one that will pay dividends for a lifetime.
Yep. That's exactly right.
Glad to be able to do it.
Well, with that, we'll move into the manager's report.
Give you a small update on the R and B Legacy Trail Loop Project. It's going really well. Basically, looks like a war zone out there. If you've been by there, you know, we've got everything all torn up, but that's progress. Lots of plannings going in every day, sidewalks going in everywhere. At the same time, we've got the renovation on the pool house, the exterior, and that's going well. I know they had a pretty aggressive timeline, but I think they're doing really well on the project. We had some really good weather. You know, we had a couple of weeks of bad weather, but it's really helped out. Moving on, we've, you know, kind of given a report. Scott had given us an article about the CARES Act money. And I did reach out to the county to let them know that we intend on either spending or have spent all of the CARES Act funds. Again, broadly speaking, you know, the article covered it pretty well, but we're gonna go, you know, we're gonna have those temperature scanners. We're gonna modernize council chambers so we can hopefully stream, live stream council and hold Zoom at a live meeting. And we're also going to digitization of some processes at City Hall, both looking forward and back with the CARES Act money, which will allow us to search from home and do a lot of things like that. Also reduces, you know, paper, which, you know, is less contact between people. And we are working on this sanitation slash restroom project, and we hope to get that going this week. Basically, we want to put a restroom on South Main Street. It's a little early, exactly what it's gonna look like, but we're getting really close. Let's see, the CRA negotiating committee met for an application last week and we're waiting to hear back from the applicant. And then we have another meeting, I think it's Thursday, we have another application, so some good things are happening. We're excited about that. The insurance committees met a couple of times. We should have renewals coming in. That process, hopefully December first, we'll have the committee's recommendation. Let's see, the chamber did reach out to me. You know, we do have that event scheduled on December fifth for the door event. And originally, we had asked for the road to be closed at one. We're gonna switch that to the twelve-thirty, just thirty minutes. And I told them I thought that would be fine with you and just let you know. Again, that's December fifth. And yes, we're monitoring, you know, the governor's words every day and also the county health department on that event. We did some patching for, to move on to the departments. Street Department, we did some blacktop patching. We had a few water breaks in the past month or so that we patched up. We did get twenty-six loads of bagged leaves so far, so that project was working well. And the leaf vac all has started, so if you have a pile of leaves out in the front, they are gonna get picked up. We're just, you know, working our way through it. Water Department, kind of a neat thing. Over the summer, September, October, we looked at, an leak detection company come in and they found some significant amount of leaks throughout the distribution system. We're currently working on those and hopefully to button those up. But as you recall, we had some losses that we were trying to impact. And we're thinking we're going to, we're gonna impact them. And it really wasn't one major leak or anything. It was just, you know, multiple small ones that are gonna add up. So we'll have those numbers moving forward, but, you know, as we fix them. Moving on to Park and Cemetery, definitely, you know, I've been working Joy Christmas, Joy Christmas, Joy Christmas, getting all that. And, you know, it's crunch time. So, you know, Thursday, Thursday, Friday are important days for Joy Christmas. Electric Department, the tree trimming company is in town on the south side. That's a big project. And also the transformer project that we started on in the spring. That is occurring Wednesday, Thursday. That's that transfer back to our rehabbed or reconditioned transformer. So as you recall, we had rented one until this day. But that rental made it a bearable project, so we weren't having to hold our breath that whole time. Hats off to the electric department for doing that. It is a big project, so. That's it, Brian.
All right. Thank you very much. So, next up, we received a recommendation from the city manager and chief of police to appoint Cameron Bednar to the Columbiana Police Auxiliary. Chief, would you like to say anything about this? Or would you like me to read the letter that was submitted?
I'd like to say a couple of things and you'll find out why in just a second. It's kind of an interesting thing. But Cameron, he's an exceptionally young man. He's a really high speed. He was easy to train. He's been in our Explorer post for, you know, a while and he's planning on going to the police academy. He's only eighteen years old and he graduated from Ursuline High School, but he's been with us for a while. We also put him to work as a part-time dispatcher. And that's what I mean by him being high-speed and easy to train. He's really helped us out through a time when we're so much in a bind with all the stuff that's going on out here in the world. It's interesting to note that his dad and his brother are also police officers. And the fun thing about it is putting Cameron on and hire him as a part-time dispatcher now is one of our auxiliaries. His dad is a police officer in Liberty Township. And I gave his dad his first police job when I was chief of police in Brookfield. So talk about things coming full circle. I thought that was really an interesting thing that gave his dad the police job. And now we got Cameron coming along and following those footsteps. So I'd recommend him to you. I think he's gonna do a great job. And when he gets to the academy and gets enough age on him, I hope we have a chance to have a crack at him being here. He's a pretty good guy.
Very good. Well, can I hear a motion? Oh, go ahead, Lance.
I'm not sure if he's here. Did he make it tonight? Is he on?
You mean, you see on the call?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
We could still move forward with appointing him and we could swear him in later.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Any comments? Have a roll call?
Everyone unmuted? Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Very good. You all received the bill list for the seventeenth. Any comments on it? Hearing none, we will move into executive sessions. We have three of them slated. I need a motion to go into executive session regarding the discussion of confidential information related to economic development, section one twenty-one point two-two G eight, a separate one for the executive session regarding discussion of sale of property, section one twenty-one point two-two G two, and an executive session regarding the discussion of collective bargaining unit, section one twenty-one point two-two G four. Can I have a motion to, for all three of those, please?
So moved.
Second.
And just, we normally save executive sessions before we even vote on this. We save them for the end of a meeting so that no one has to wait, but there will be action after these discussions, so we have to. But we don't foresee them taking too long. With that, can I have a roll call, please?
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Very good. We'll be back as soon as we can.
You're gonna go down to the bottom of your screen. It'll say breakout rooms?
And if it does, if you don't see breakout rooms, there will be three dots that say more. You might need to click on that.
Amber, I don't see that.
I know. I'm a little, that's my concern around, especially, Rick, you're on an iPad, correct?
Yes. Yes, I am.
Dan, are you on a, like a regular monitor?
Yes, I am. Click on leave the meeting.
Lance, what does it show on your end? It'll be at the bottom. There's a little icon. It'll either look like four little squares or it'll be three dots that say more underneath it at the very bottom of your screen.
Mine's at the top of the screen.
Okay. Lance, I can't resend without closing it, so. Oh, Dan made it.
What's your screen say, Rick?
Well, if I hit more.
Yeah.
It says chat, meeting settings, minimize meeting, or disconnect audio.
At the very bottom, do you see anything that says like polling or anything like that?
No.
Let me see. Let me try to broadcast. I don't think if I broadcast.
Rick, what if you take your finger to the bottom of the screen? And just, yeah, touch it down there.
It's tough because I'm not sure what the Apple, what the iPad screens look like. Yeah, I have an idea.
Oh, wait a second. Here. It's, it's, join the breakout room.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right, Lance, he should be good then.
So you're all muted. You'll have to unmute and I'll need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Looks like not everyone came out yet. Who are we waiting on? Rick?
Rick.
I say we vote without him. It's a vote of no confidence. There he is.
There he is.
This is probably not good two weeks before he becomes mayor.
We didn't say he was gonna be a bad mayor.
Fair enough.
You're muted, Rick. I made a motion or asked for a motion to come out of the executive session and you weren't there yet. So I said, we've got five votes and we'll just tell Rick we had a vote of no confidence on that sixth vote.
Okay, I found you guys.
All right. So can I have a roll call?
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Well?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
All right. So now we'll move into old business. Due to the length of the ordinances, can I have a motion to read them by title only?
So moved.
Second it.
Second.
Have a roll call?
Liston?
Yes.
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-r-five-six-two, second reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement with APL Properties LLC for the city of Columbiana.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Have a roll call?
D'Attilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Move on to new business. Ordinance number twenty-oh-three-zero-five-three, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a ground lease agreement with Columbiana Exempted Village School District regarding certain tracts of land within Firestone Park.
So moved.
Second it.
Any discussion on this? I think the discussion, we probably need to let the public know that this is to slightly change how we're doing things in the past. But moving forward with getting the stadium turned over to the school. Have a roll call?
Noel?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Right, and lastly, I need a motion to accept the agreement between the ASME Union and the city of Columbia.
So move.
We got three.
Second.
Yeah, three firsts and a second.
Any discussion? Have roll call.
Becker?
Excuse me, yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
DiTilio?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Very good. Anyone from the public wishing to address counsel this evening? Hearing none, we'll move into council comments.
Lance, you said a little while ago about, and I, I need a clarification with our going back to meetings within council chambers. What were you alluding to there?
You're muted.
In the future, we hope to be able to stream council meetings live. And if we were to go back to a, a meeting, it would be a hybrid where you could stay at home and, and, and attend, or you could, you know, come in. And, and that's, I think, Mr. DiTilio's challenge was to try to get that by the second meeting in December. If that was the case, it would be a total hybrid system where the, the public could watch the meeting as it's, as it's being streamed. They could also view it such as what we're doing now, Zoom. And council members could be at home participating in Zoom, or they may be able to go to council chambers and do a meeting from there. But at this point, we would think that there wouldn't be a public invited to that meeting if it was in person. Just be the council members, the kind of the core group. But again, if you chose not to do that, we are gonna make it so you can, you can do either or.
Okay, I, my concern right at the present time with the jump in, and increase with the COVID. I was gonna recommend that, as I know that we were getting close to what we'd agreed upon, that we still stay with Zoom until they, you know, a significant distance is made and success rate of the vaccine.
Yeah, you guys can discuss that. We'll, we'll be, we'll be ready, hopefully sometime in December to do anything you want to do. If, if continue doing it like this, then, then we would, but we would have that capability.
Okay. Well, I certainly appreciate the fact that you have researched the other two means of being able, one to have the public there. I think that's very important. And for either one of us all to make the choice one way or the other.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
After my challenge last week, obviously, things have changed, but I would still, it would still be great to be able to do that one way or the other. So, you know, I still, I still hold the challenge open, and, and if we can get in there, and some of us are willing to do that, that would be awesome. If not, you know, we've been doing the, doing it this way for nine months now, and it's worked very well, eight months now, or whatever it is. It's worked very well, but you know, being in the chambers and, and actually being able to talk to people face to face is something I think we all miss.
So I, I, I intend to be in council chambers for at least the last meeting. It'll be my last meeting. I, I plan on being there. I'll steal the wifi if nothing else and sit there in my chair.
You're assuming there's still chairs there.
There are. I was in it today. Oh, I, I have a, a, a comment. I just want to recognize the, the loss of the city of a, a very special woman. Donna Becker, we, we lost her la- last week to a, a fight with cancer. And she, she did amazing things for the city. She always put everyone else first. I, I loved working with her, even at the beginning, whenever we didn't get along so well, it was always fun because she always, she always made me feel sharper. I, I had to be ready for whatever she was gonna bring. And over, over that, I think, at least for me and her, we grew to greatly appreciate what was inside the other person's heart. And so, Dan, I, I know that your loss is deeper than the rest of us. But I, I want to publicly thank you and your family for at least giving, giving her time to us because she did special things.
Thank you, Ron.
Any other comments?
Donna was a class act. Everything she did, she did with grace and dignity, and I think we're all better for having known her and, and worked with her.
When we first, when we first got into this community, I guess when I first got into council, we attended the Chamber Awards banquet, the first one that we went to. And I knew very few people, of course, Dan, and my wife knew nobody. I mean, and we walked in there and Dan motioned us to come over. And Donna just took Dee Dee under her wing like a, a mother chicken. And sorry, no, I didn't mean to say chicken. And, and just made her feel welcome. And Dee Dee talked about that often and really appreciated the fact that she, she just did what she did, and she was just, I can't say enough about Donna. She was a wonderful woman.
Yep.
She sure brought me a long way.
Dragged you along, dragged you along for the ride.
It was a great journey.
Yes, I'm sure it was.
Hey, Dan, I'm sorry to hear about your loss. Just, uh, from the first time I was in, uh, I don't know, just, just being around planning commission and, and council, you guys made quite the, quite the pair. So I just, heart, heart goes out to you and, and I just, again, like Brian, you know, I mean, after the meetings, she, she always had some input and advice to give, and I, and I look forward to those moments after those meetings. So again, I, I, prayers will be with you, so.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, the leadership and the knowledge that she brought to planning commission was amazing, and, and I think she took me under her wing too, so that was, that was pretty cool.
You guys hit it easier than me.
Well, stop and think about that.
I have. Any, anything else?
Um, I'll just, I'll add, I know I've said this before, but one of the things that I really appreciated was, because obviously I met her when I was fighting an uphill battle, to say the least. And, you know, the first time I sat down and talked to her after a council meeting, and it was, it was an argument, of course, but it was an argument in the, in the best and most classic sense of an exchange of ideas. And that's such an, an art form that's been lost, and it's so appreciated when you, when you sit down with somebody and actually exchange ideas and, and it's productive and helpful, and she taught me a lot in that one little, the 15 minutes I talked to her. And over the, you know, intervening year and a half, the, when I've talked to her, it's always been, we've had some great discussions, and, and I've learned a lot from her, and you know, Dan, her, her gift to the city, your family's gift to the city is, is incalculable. And I just want to tell you how much I appreciate, you know, what you've done for the city, what your family's done, and what Donna did. I don't think I can say that enough.
Dan, I think some of those discussions that you had with Donna helped my relation with ship with Donna.
Well, anything that works, Brian.
I'm not sure where that one could go to, but
Oh, it's, it's fun to be able to talk about right now, though.
Yes. Dan, I'd add that I knew Donna a long time before I got involved in city government. Once I did get involved, working with her on planning commission, she did have an amazing amount of knowledge. And she really was able to calm people down and get them on point with what they needed to talk about before planning commission. So I saw another part of her that was just truly amazing to see. She certainly will be missed. I will miss her, and you're in my thoughts and prayers.
Wow, thank you all. Very appreciating, very comfortable.
I just liked, I just like to say that in my mind, Donna epitomized why Columbia got recognized as the nicest place in America because, you know, people like her that give in this town, she was on R and B, she was in women's club. You know, the Legion, she played many roles, and it was all about the city, and I'll never forget that.
Thank you, Rick.
And any other comments? If none, we need a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Well, you know what? I didn't wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, but we can do that now before the meeting's over, right?
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Be safe.
See you later.